We appreciate your blessings for this beautiful community, that you may guide us in the decisions that we make and ensure that we improve the quality of life for all residents. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you Ralph for the invocation and thank you Matt for leading us in the pledge. Gloria, let the roll call show that everyone is present tonight.
Mayor McFarland, regarding the minutes, I move approval of the City Council's regular meeting minutes from October 15th and the City Council's special meeting minutes from October 29th as they're presented, and except for the record, the Casa Grande Youth Commission minutes from September 8th, the Healthcare Benefit Trust Board of Trustees minutes from September 18th as they're presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Claims against the city, D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of claims against the city for October 10th through October 30th, as presented.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval tonight. Larry, any changes from staff?
We have none on this chair.
Okay, I will make one change. I'm gonna move the, move the, where is it here?
N. We know what you're doing.
Yeah, I know. The, um, the reports, item N, we'll move that to just before item M. Any other changes from anybody else?
Done, done.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve as adjusted.
Just move.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any approved? Any disapproved? Okay, no special presentations. We have consent agenda items tonight, so all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no specific or separate discussion of those items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda item and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you want to remove, change?
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright, so we'll move to item I, Award of Contracts, I1.
Public comments.
Oh, sorry. I blew right by that, didn't I? Backing up. We do have a public comments tonight. I was used to the special meeting. Item H on the, on the agenda is a public comment, so I will throw the floor open for anyone in the public who would like to address the council and remind you that we, it's not an agendized item, so we can't discuss it, but we can ask staff to follow up. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to approach the podium. Seeing none, then I'll close the floor. See, I knew there was nobody here to do a public comment. We'll move to item I, I1.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, item I1 is the second reading of the development agreement with Lucid Motors, and I, at our special meeting, the mayor and council approved that. We gave a very thorough outline of the project as well as the, the development agreement. So with that, it's typical business practice for us to include these items.
And the reason it's on here, not on the consent?
Not on the consent, right. So we're ultimately asking you in the, in the open meeting, in the, in the regular agenda to consider it. I'd entertain any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Did you go over that again?
With a video.
I, I just, the, wondering, it says authorizing the use, Penale County authorizes the use and/or expenditure of funds for economic development, authorizing the use and/or expenditure of any other funds necess- necessary to satisfy the requirements of their development agreement, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the development agreement. Where do the funds come from? Are those set aside funds, or are those, where would we, if we had to come up with extra funds, where, where would those be located?
From the city of Casa Grande's development, or, or the county specifically?
Cities.
So, let me just pull my report out here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The, the funds are really based on a, on a performance-based scenario, and so, as an example, the primary, one of the primary incentives that the city is giving is in fact construction sales tax credit. So ultimately, as the developer constructs their plant and pays the construction sales tax, there'll be a portion of that that gets set aside specifically to, to meet the obligation of this development agreement. As far as the, the workforce development grant, the $250,000 a year, that is a pledge of franchise fees through the economic development ordinance that we have with, with APS as, as a result of the franchise fees, and again, somewhat performance-based on that. As you can see in the economic development report, we ultimately are utilizing franchise fees that will be, new franchise fees that will be paid by Lucid will be a component of that revenue stream that is being used to, to cover the costs associated with that, with that particular incentive.
My, my question basically was, where it says, "In any other funds necessary to satisfy the requirement of the development agreement," do we have money, or where would we go for money? Would we, if we, if the funds available aren't enough and we have to come up with more money, which is what this says we have to do, just, I'm just questioning where that would come from.
And, and Mr. Powell, it's, Councilmember Powell, I think it's a good question. The purpose of it, the reason that we have two different authorizations is because we sort of have two different ways we're gonna be paying it, right? Our statute, our, our code, under 701 and 702, requires, you know, essentially that you make your findings, that you did, and say, and we simply give, wanna give authority to make sure that the finance director and Larry can spend that money, that's the workforce development. The other monies that will be spent are, for example, the refunds of permit fees and construction sales tax that are inside the development agreement. The other funds you might use are ones that, that council may actually see, like for example, when we do Thornton Road, that will actually come through council, so that's not the funds that are being contemplated here. But what is, is if Lucid started building in three months and we have to refund them the construction sales tax, we just simply wanted to have the authorization specifically from council to expend those funds, not so much for this council, but because it binds future councils.
Good enough. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, then Gloria, I'll consider ordinance 3100.
Ordinance number 3100, in ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a three-party development agreement between the city of Casa Grande, Ativia USA Inc., DBA Lucid Motors USA Inc., and Penale County, authorizing the use, authorizing the use and/or expenditure of funds for economic development, authorizing the use and/or expenditure of any other funds necessary to satisfy the requirements of the development agreement, and authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the development agreement and other documents reasonably necessary for the purpose of implementing the development agreement.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3100 as presented.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Alright, item I2's. You've got prefab bathroom?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Because three of the next four items are tied together, I have a very short presentation to give you, to give you a better overall understanding of the project. So, the Dave White Park project has several main components in, in the project. These were all approved in the CIP in this past year, but this would be the conversion of our current sport courts to 12 permanent pickleball courts. It would also include a new bathroom structure, a new shaded playground, and a new basketball Because we are doing this project in-house, we don't have an architect, so I don't have great conceptual drawings. We have the drawings that we could get together in our staff, but you can see.
I could do.
Yes. You can see how the pickleball courts would provide 12 public pickleball courts, which would be the largest pickleball facility in Casa Grande. The, the restroom location and the shaded playground location are noted there. The basketball court is, is further north and out of the picture, but would, would be included in the project.
Is there an existing court that's up there?
Yes.
Is it gonna ref-?
Refurbish, yes. Replace it, actually. As you can see, when a tennis court is converted into pickleball courts, you can get more than one for one. Tennis courts are quite a bit larger. This, this is just depicts that you can get multiple pickleball courts in there, as, as in the previous, we'll have 12 in our final design.
Would there be any tennis courts left at Dave White, or would they all be moved to the, the new one?
Right, they'd all be moved to Carmack Knapp Park. This, this just shows you a rendition of what could be, come of the pickleball courts. We haven't chosen the colors. It could be blue, could be the green and red that is shown here, but the, the courts would be side by side with some fencing in between them. This is a pickleball court under construction, so you can see the nets haven't been installed yet here. The bathroom, the bathroom structure will be the next item on the agenda. The bathroom structure is a precast concrete, all moved in in one piece. It's the same type of model that's out at Grande Sports World right now, and has been very successful in several areas around the state. This is a concept from our, for our playground. We had Miracle Recreation help design and meet the needs of the city. Within this playground structure includes swings, slides, climbing structures, and what's not depicted in this picture is the shaded structure that would go over the top of it. The, the schedule, if approved tonight, we could have groundbreaking in late December on the basketball court. The pickleball conversion, we would need to work with the pickleball players to fit it within their schedule, 'cause it would take them out of service for several weeks. And then the playground and bathroom, we expect to be finished in the spring of 2019.
Do the pickleballers use it now, right, with the temporary netting and stuff?
Correct.
That they pick up at the golf course?
That's an overview of the project. Three of the next four items on the agenda will be specifically about items on this project, so I can either take questions now, or we can take them individually as we go into the present, or each item.
Does anybody have any questions?
Steve, before your time here, we had a, a standard bathroom plan, and I think we have one over at Pierrot Park. We've had a couple other. How does this compare, I guess, cost-wise mainly, to those bathrooms?
Sure.
It's pretty sturdy, I mean, it's concrete, so.
This, this will be a lesser cost to fit the budget of what we had for this project, and also the space considerations. We chose not to, those are built bathrooms.
Little site-built, yeah.
Yes, yes, and so, I believe that if we would have new construction somewhere else, we would use those plans, because we've used them in multiple locations throughout the city, but we were looking for a lower-cost thing that could, could, we could reutilize our septic system that we currently have, and.
Thank you. Concrete head.
Mary?
A quick comment, too, is, is I, I like the idea that we're separating pickleball activities from the tennis activities. It's a totally different activity, I believe. It, hopefully that it will make both sets of players much more satisfied with our courts, and that also because pickleball players, from what I understand, tend to be a little louder than tennis, it's nice that they'll be at Dave White while the tennis courts will be over more in our neighborhood setting, setting of Carmack Knapp, so, very good.
Tony Ivins and Donna Kerr and some of the tennis people, are they pretty happy with what, what we're?
Yes, I believe since those projects will be running concurrently, you know, neither party will be out of service for, I mean, there'll, there'll be some construction timelines, but.
I mean, are they aware that the tennis courts are gonna be separated out?
Yes, yes, we had a-
That'll make them happy, and also the, yeah, like you said.
So as part of the process, we had a public meeting last fall, I believe it was, with the, with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and we had citizens from both sides of the fence talking to us, and, and that's where this was brought up to the CIP.
Very well put together.
This past year.
Thank you, Steve.
Mayor, just a quick question, please. On the bathrooms, you said that they were, they were cheaper, but are, what is the timeline as far as, you know, how long are they gonna last versus the other ones? I mean, they look cheaper, but.
No, I think they're gonna last very long because of the, the construction. You know, they're, they're built off-site, and they come in one piece, and they're, they're precast concrete, so they're almost indestructible, honestly.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been, I've been, I've been in the ones out of-
You've visited. TMI.
They're very substantial.
Mayor approved.
Mayor, I'm sure.
And then my second question is on the pickleball you've mentioned about working around their schedule, and that kinda concerns me a little bit, only because I think that we need to stay on task, and if we give them ample notice, and we publicize when we're gonna be doing that, I think that that is probably a better plan for us, so.
Sure, sure. No, and I, I totally appreciate that, and, you know, we have other sport courts like at Vilago that we could offer. We have the temporary nets, and so I just need to work with them, and, because I, I don't know exactly when the company can start, based on, I just need to get that in the pipeline.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so we'll consider the first item here, which is I2, which is the 3101, I think that's the bathroom.
Yes, so, so, thank you, Mayor and council. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve the purchase of a manufactured bathroom for $58,731.18. This is a Cortez model from CXT Precast Products, Inc., utilizing an approved cooperative purchasing agreement, available through Sourcewell, which was formerly known as NJPA. Also asking for an additional 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $64,604.29. So, the bathroom project, a couple highlights there. The Cortez unit, of course, is the same unit that was successfully installed at Grande Sports World. It does meet all local building codes and ADA compliance. The material is easy to maintain and able to withstand high levels of vandalism. It does include the delivery, the crane, and the crew to set the building on a prepared site, so there is some site work that is necessary. There will be additional costs for plumbing and electrical work, not in this proposal, because you have to have everything ready when they come and put the bathroom on the site.
Just out of curiosity, do you just have a mirror or stainless steel?
The mirror, I would have to actually look, the, the fix-
I mean, that's not that much. I know a lot of mirrors don't last.
Right, the, the fixtures are stainless steel.
Yeah.
I do not believe there's a mirror in there. There's probably a mirror option, but I do not believe we've chosen that.
Dangerous.
Okay.
And that additional cost was about $9,500, is that right?
We're still working through those. That was an estimate, but we would come back to you in further, we'd follow our procurement procedures for the electrical and the plumbing.
Okay, that'd be a separate.
Separate actions, yes.
Okay, can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 3101, in ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from CXT, Inc., for the purchase of a manufactured precast bathroom facility, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $64,604.29, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to CXT, Inc. Mayor McFarland, I move for adoption of ordinance number 3101 as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, I3 is the, looks like the playground equipment?
Yes, so, staff is recommending the mayor and city council approve the purchase and installation of playground equipment in the amount not to exceed $167,063.44 from Miracle Recreation, utilizing an approved purchasing agreement through Sourcewell, again, formerly known as NJPA. The playground equipment, the proposal does include the design to meet the needs and desires of the city, so we, we've had interaction with them all along in the process, to pick the items that we feel necessary would go in that park. The equipment does include climbers, a very unique swing, slides, and, and of course, the shade structure that would go over the top. All the equipment is ADA compliant, and then we put ADA protective material underneath for access for the public. This proposal does include the engineering and installation of the pieces, and for the best use of resources, our city staff will provide any demolition and preparation of the site, and also final placement of the safety surf, surfacing underneath the equipment.
Okay.
And with that, I'd stand for questions.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, what, what were some of, like, the, the design elements that you wanted in there to, to make sure that they were?
When, when we look at, when we look at this type of a, a piece, and I, I have other pictures that are from different angles on it, number one, we always wanted to include a swing. Swings are very popular, they're one of the most heavily utilized pieces in a playground. Also, we looked at the ages that would be using this, and we, because of the ages that are in that park, we chose to have a multipurpose equipment that includes ages five to 12. So sometimes you can have the, the five to seven age group, or the eight to 12 age group, and we have a multitude of families in there that have all wide ranges of ages. And so, with that, we, we chose these pieces that can be used by both age groups, and typically you would wanna have a climber in there, too, so that the kids can, can climb. So swings, slides, and climbers are, are the typical activities in those type of parks.
Yes, Mary.
I know that there's, recently, there's been more discussion on the types of materials that are now being used underneath the playground. What kind of material are you thinking of using?
This would be the engineered wood fibers.
Okay.
Last year, in a council action, we approved engineered wood fibers in all of our parks, and we have placed them in all of our parks, with the exception of this one and one other, I believe. But this one, we've been waiting to do it with this project, so we actually have the product on hand-
Okay.
-that we purchased last year.
Okay, good.
Yes, Lisa?
Back to Ralph's question, you talked about the popularity of swings, but is there only one swing, or is there going to be a couple in that little area there?
This, this swing can be used by more than one person at a time, so it's a, kind of a, what they call a family swing.
Okay.
So you could get on with your child and, and swing together, or your child could be on there by themselves. There are other swings in the, in the other playground that's, you know, in Dave White Park, that's on the other end.
Okay.
So you try to get a variety of pieces, basically.
Mr. Ralph?
What age group would this be aimed at?
Five to 12.
Five to 12, uh-huh.
So the little guys, the little ones are not?
The, they-
Two and three-year-olds, aren't you? It isn't-
Right, they would, they would be at the other-
Down there with the-
Right.
And stuff, okay.
Although they can play on most of it, but it's not necessarily designed specifically for the tot.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Yes.
We could go with maroon and gold for the pickleball.
Or, or we could go other colors.
Alright, can I get an ordinance number, please?
Ordinance number 3102, in ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for the purchase of playground equipment, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed $167,063.44, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Miracle Recreation Equipment Company. Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3102 as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, so, we've already talked about I5, but now we have I4, so we're, I guess we'll-
We'll, we'll get to I5 in a moment. We're gonna take a break from Dave White Park project for just a moment.
Okay.
And follow the agenda. The, the I4 is, is the-
Thank you.
Is the Hayden Building Corp. and the Carmack Knapp Park project, so we'll, we will stay in parks. Staff is recommending the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to contract with Hayden Building Corporation for the construction and renovation of Carmack Knapp Park at a guaranteed maximum price of $8 million, $8,082,634. Back on October 1st, I presented information to you in a study session. I do have that study session queued up if we need it, but the information has not changed. Since that time, we've been refining the design and trying to get to a GMP to bring to council. There are four major goals in this project: increased parking, a splash pad, more sports fields, and an improved walking path. There are other items that will be included, including a lawn area, bathrooms, tennis courts, basketball court, a lot of infrastructure that goes in, lighting, things like that. There is no work on the baseball field with this proposal, so Kiwanis Field will stay the same and stay open throughout the process. The schedule for this is a groundbreaking in mid to late January, if all goes well. The pool area will be the main focus at the beginning, so that we can get that area open by Memorial Day, and, and the pool would not be affected during this, this timeframe of construction. The sports fields would be under construction during the early part of the spring, so that we can have grow-in during the summer. So all those sports fields would be closed, basically, from groundbreaking until fall, and substantial completion in early fall. And, and that would be when the whole park would reopen, so.
Have we communicated that schedule to the residents?
To, to the residents, we, we have not yet, but we definitely will, because there's, there'll be an outreach program through Hayden. They, they've got that in their plans to, because there will be some traffic disruption, and there will be some construction work going on, so we'll be cognizant of that and make sure that the citizens are aware of, of all the work that's going on.
Yeah, 'cause there's a school there, too.
Yes, and the, the school, we've worked with and been talking to them all along the way, they will actually get to use additional parking with the, with this project, because there'll be a, a new parking lot immediately adjacent to their school. So they, they use parking at Carmack Knapp right now to the south of the school, and it should help alleviate some of their congestion in that parking lot. The cost of this, again, is a GMP of, a guaranteed maximum price of $8,082,634. We originally planned to be a phased project, but staff is recommending accepting the entire GMP at this time, with construction taking place over parts of two fiscal years. And with that, I'd stand for any questions.
I just had a question, and Steve, this isn't for you, but it seems like Hayden doesn't ordinate amount of construction in our community. Do we go out for bid, or how, how do we do so much with them and not have other builders?
I can, I can answer that, Larry. We did do a competitive process quite some time ago, in the, so this is a construction manager-at-risk delivery method, and we did a competitive process and-
Who's the manager? Is it somebody within Hayden, or is it an out, somebody from our side?
Well, we will have, in, in another council action, we will have a project manager for this project, but Hayden is doing the construction and, and the construction manager-at-risk delivery method, so they-
The guy at risk is not an employee of Hayden.
Well, I'm not following your question there, that-
Usually if you have somebody at risk, they're not associated with the building that's going on, and, and so they represent both sides of the city in it.
So, so we will have a project man- So, so we will have a project manager for that.
Okay, it would not be an employee of Hayden.
Correct, correct.
That's, that's what I wanted.
Yes, yes, the project manager would be brought to you in the next city council meeting in two weeks.
Steve, do you remember how many, how many people put in for that, what Mr. Powell was talking about?
Sure, we interviewed four, for sure.
Yeah, I was thinking we had four final that I was adding.
Yes, and we, we probably received six or seven proposals and interviewed four.
Anybody else have any questions?
A little comment and, and a question, but, you know, thank you, because I know this was kind of thrown at you the minute you walked through the door, and it's been a process that's been going on, and, and you know, what's great about this is we did have so much of the community input on this and got feedback and adjusted the plans, and, and it is exciting to see what the end result is. I mean, it's going to be great to see when the final product, but, you know, I do feel that there's, you know, people are excited about it. I think we, you know, met the needs of the community, so, you know, but it is important, the communication piece. There's a lot of people that use those fields, and so I hope when you're communicating, you know, the construction timeline, that maybe there's some alternative fields that you can recommend, you know, is the school district going to be able to help us and open up some of their fields while we're constructing, but just maybe give people an idea, because I drive, I live in that neighborhood and see the activity in, on those fields. So I'm really hoping that we can help some of those teams that are practicing their, you know, find alternative fields.
Good point, Steve, maybe when we do the communication, we, we list some alternative locations for people to go.
Sure, we're going to be, we're going to need to be very creative to, to meet our user groups, because this is one of the reasons that this project is, is being done, is to expand sports fields, so.
Well, that's why, you know, can the schools help us out, and I know we talked about IGAs with the schools and, you know, using their fields, and Dr. Gonzalez has talked about-
And the CCG middle, new fields may be done by then. They're working on them now.
Okay.
So that may be something to talk to Dr.-
Gonzalez.
Gonzalez about. But yes, we'll be, we've, we've been talking to our user groups, and we'll continue to talk to them, and then, of course, when people call in for reservations, we'll, we'll definitely be having a list of alternatives, because it will be closed from mid-January till September-ish.
And that's peak time for a lot of the, because the-
Well, we're trying to get it open for the fall peak time, you know, the spring peak time will be-
Yeah, I know, peak time all year long.
Yeah.
That's where we live here.
Okay.
Exactly.
Anybody else have any other questions, or? Okay, can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number three-zero-three. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing a construction contract with Hayden Building Corporation to provide construction manager at risk construction services for the Carl McNatt Park Project, Phase One, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed eight million, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number three-one-zero-three as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes, and, and Mary just pointed out that Ted Hawkins is representing the city as the manager, so that, that certainly is reassuring to know that.
We'll be bringing that contract back to the council.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, item I five, back to Dave White.
Back to Dave White. So this is the last piece of the Dave White Park project. Staff is recommending the Marin City Council authorize the city managers to enter into a contract for construction of sport courts at Dave White Park with Elite Sports Builders in the amount of two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars, utilizing an approved purchasing agreement available through National IPA, contract R seventeen-eleven-oh-two. Staff also recommends allowing a ten percent contingency on this project for a total amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. The sport courts, this, this contract would cover materials, equipment, fencing, lighting at both the pickleball area and the new basketball area. We would have upgraded lighting at the current pickleball courts. The same company designed and built the original Dave White courts, and they were named Sunland Sports at that time, and they have now changed their name to Elite Sports Builders. So they do have a history with us and a history at that site. They do have maintained two certified sport court construction managers on their staff, and so we feel very comfortable with them providing these type of services for us. One note, the total project, the total budget for the Dave White Park project is five-hundred-and-one-thousand. If this is approved, we would have two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand for the pickleball and tennis, basketball improvements, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand for playground equipment, sixty-four thousand for the bathroom project, for a total cost of four-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-six dollars in that park, with a few minor things that still need to come to, to tie everything together. So with that, I would, I would stand for questions.
When we, when we do these projects, especially, you know, Carl McNatt and Dave White, we work with our PIO and make sure that we, we need to have a nice press release and show pictures and the improvements, and, you know, where the people's tax money is going and, and how we're improving the parks, I think that's important to kind of get that communication out there.
Sure.
So if you would make sure we follow up with, with our new PIO, he's sitting around over here if you haven't met him. Phil, wave your hand so he knows we're here, okay.
And, and you know, last year, we had the Neighborhood Park Improvement Plan, and we, we did some of the smaller parks.
Yes.
And, and I've given you information on those, and we've, we've promoted pictures on our social media sites with those, so we'll definitely do the same.
It wouldn't hurt to put it out there three or four times.
Sure, sure. Those parks turned out very well, they were more in-house, these are bigger projects.
Right. Donna?
I just need clarification, because here it says nine pickleball, and you had mentioned twelve.
Well, it'll be a total of twelve. We currently have three.
Okay, got it.
And nine additional.
Okay, thank you.
And then we, we will surface the three that we currently have, so that the surface is the same at all of them.
Okay, thank you.
They don't have, they don't have to redo all the concrete, do they?
No, no, the concrete's in great shape there, so.
So just resurface it.
Resurface and drill new holes for the, the different posts and lay out a little bit of fencing.
The permanent post?
Yes.
Matt?
Any question about the lighting? I see that it's LED, which is great, but I know a lot of our other parks go with the musco lighting, so it's all centrally controlled and located, is, I was just wondering why we're not doing that.
We're, well, there's a couple reasons we're not using musco lighting for this particular project. Number one is the budget, number two is that the sport courts use a different type of lighting, it's shorter, and, and we typically have those lights on a timer, and so they come on six PM, turn off at 10, something like that.
We don't need the ability to call it in and all that.
Right, right, and so we, when we reserve the, the sports fields, like at Carl McNatt, those will be the bigger sports field lighting that we'll put on our musco system that we can, we can reserve. But it will be on a timer, so that we utilize the best part of the day.
And it's LED, so it'll be efficient.
There are tennis courts that were, used to be over here for the city, they were, they were on timer.
Yeah, we have several of those around town, and we, at the Dave White Park, we will utilize the current light poles and electrical that's already there and retrofit the, the fixtures. The new basketball court will have to have new lighting, but, but it doesn't have as much lighting as, as the tennis pickleball facility.
All right, okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance-
Ordinance number three-one-zero-four. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Elite Sports Builders LLC for construction and lighting of sports courts, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Elite Sports Builders LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of ordinance number three-one-zero-four as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes, with a comment that Steve's really done some heavy lifting on the recreational facilities in our community, and we appreciate it.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is I six.
Thank you. Before I start, this RCA is written to adopt two resolutions. Because of some scheduling issues and something not getting on the agenda, we're only going to be asking for one resolution, so I apologize for that. Staff recommends that the Marin City Council adopt a resolution with a resolution to execute a contract with AZ Western Contracting for a total base bid amount of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars, and along with that, a twenty percent contingency for a, an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. This contract will provide for the reconstruction of a portion of the Toltec Buttes Bridge between Selma Highway, Hell Highway, and Grogan Avenue. The Florence Casa Grande Canal is at that location, and ADOP performed a, a annual inspection of that structure and noted some deterioration to portions of that bridge. After evaluating the condition of the bridge, we did close half of that bridge down to keep traffic off of that until we could go through the process to design these improvements and get this contract out to bid and then in front of council for authorization. The second portion of this, as this RCA was written, was the IGA that we're going to be asking to enter into with the city of Eloy for a cost share. This bridge sits right on our boundary, so we split the costs of the maintenance of this bridge. We didn't know that until the inspectors contacted us, and we started looking into that and then worked those details out with Eloy. So we did go out to bid and got reasonable prices for this, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? So we'll get the, the IGA with Eloy on the next council meeting.
It will be on the next agenda, yes.
All right, seeing no questions, then can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number?
Five-one-four-four. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from AZ Western Contracting, Inc., to provide the reconstruction of a portion of the Toltec Buttes Bridge, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number fifty-one-fifty-four is read, or forty-four is read.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, last I item is I seven.
Staff, yeah, staff recommends that the Marin City Council authorize the purchase and installation of flooring materials from Diversified Floor Services for a, an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, and this is for the North Operations Center Carpet Replacement Project. Back in around two thousand and seven, when we were completing the renovations of the North Operations Center, we determined at that time that some of the existing carpet and flooring were still adequate, and we did not include those in that upgrade. And now those flooring materials have, have found the end of their useful life and then some, so duct tape only goes so far. So this is simply a replacement project, we'll be using the carpet squares that we've used in quite a few of our facilities around the city, and we are utilizing a state contract, ADSPO thirteen dash zero-four-zero-four-five-three to procure this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Kevin, help me out on that procurement process. Do we still send out an RFP or, you know, in the community? Do we see if somebody else can come in with a better bid, maybe a local contract?
We did not choose to, to bid this out. Because it's such a small project, it's much easier for us to look at those bid prices that the state's able to get, and it, it's a great deal.
Okay, all right, I'm just, just hoping that we can try and spread, you know, speaking of shopping local, that we had tonight, so. Matt?
You know, I'd like to follow up with that and say, this is maybe a big project for a local carpet person, thirty-six thousand dollars, so I'm kind of disappointed that we didn't bid it out, because I asked about that the other day, and I thought that we had bid it out. I know it's a little bit time-consuming, but I don't think it could be that much, just, you know, to get a couple bids locally for the carpet, so, you know.
We might be shocked.
Yes, you never know.
Yeah. Anyway, just food for thought. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, can I get a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Resolution number five-one-four-five. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Diversified Flooring Services, Phoenix LLC, for the purchase, for the purchase and installation of carpeting, authorizing expenditure of public funds in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand, nine hundred, thirty-nine dollars and three cents, authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Diversified Flooring Services, Phoenix LLC, in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona State Bid List.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five-one-four-five as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
I'm going to bid no, uh, vote no because of the no bid, no.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, moving to item J, this is our boards and commissions' appointments. Larry, can we just mention them all, and can we voice approve them all at the same time, or do we do one at a time? I think you're going to have to take each actual item one at a time. Okay, because they're, okay, because they're an item number, okay. All right, well, first, the first one is appointment of Regis Summers to the Arts and Humanities Commission with the term to extend through September thirtieth. Regis isn't here, is she? Okay, but we want to publicly thank her for her service. She's been really dedicated to this, she also helped with the, this weekend's event, the Mosaic Festival, so she was, she was all over, yeah, she just got an award, too, so thank you to Regis, I'll accept.
I move to nominate, or I move to appoint Regis Summers to Arts and Humanities Commission?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Regis is approved, thank you, Regis. J two, consider approving and reappointing Michael McBride to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to extend through November seventh, and I know Mike is here, so Mike, please stand up, thank you very much. Thank you for your service, we really, it is greatly appreciated. We'll double your pay for this next term, okay?
Mayor McFarland, could I get clarification from our city attorney on whether I should recuse myself on this?
All right, thank you, Mayor McFarland, Councilmember McBride. So the state laws concerning conflicts of interest, the statute, what it does essentially defines those conflicts and says that no person who has a substantial interest in a contract, a sale, a purchase, or a decision of an agency can vote on that, you need to recuse yourself and, and make the conflict known. In this case, though, because this is a non-salaried office, it has no pecuniary interest whatsoever, and you do not have a conflict on voting either for his appointment, you can vote yes or no, or in any, or in any planning and zoning matter that he later would vote on.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor McFarland, I move to reappoint Michael McBride to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, no opposition? Okay. All right, thank you, Mike. Congratulations.
Enamnished.
All right, item J three is consider approving the appointment of Anthony Estrada to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the term to extend through November seventh, and I will say that Anthony was on the Planning and Zoning Commission and resigned to run for council. So since he was not successful in, in his bid for council, he requested to be back, put back on the planning and zoning, so. With Mr. Powell's help, we, we had a good conversation with him, so. And again, thank you to Anthony and, and his dedication to the- And again, thank you to Anthony and his dedication to this planning and zoning. It does take some time, probably the more involved commission, board and commission that we have. So I'll consider his approval.
I would move his approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, then I need a roll call vote. Can we do a roll call vote, then?
Yeah, you don't need to do a roll call vote. We simply need, under the new state law concerning recording the vote, the clerk just simply needs to record who voted in opposition.
Okay.
So I think they're, they're going to do that based on what we have, so.
Okay. So noted. Item J. 4, consider approving the appointment of Bill Belding to the Board of Adjustments with the term extended through November 17th, 2021. And Bill? Is he here? Nope?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And again, thank you to all of our volunteers for our boards and commissions. I know it's, it's very important jobs and we appreciate everybody's participation. I think we're pretty full now, too, are we not, Larry? Do we have some openings still?
Okay, no openings today, but we do have.
Some coming.
Some expirations that are coming up.
Okay. All right, item K is ordinances, resolutions, and matters subject requiring for the council's action, K. 1. This is the Judicial Selection Committee in describing the duties and declaring an emergency in terms of replacing our, the judge's term is co-terminus with the mayor. And as our election concluded in August, because everyone qualified with a 50% plus one vote, and so we have, I think that election is, or we're, appointments will be done on the 3rd, is that right, Larry? December 3rd, our first meeting in December is where everybody will be inducted, all the new, and then that's also, we want to start the process and the judicial selection process now, so we have about six weeks for the committee to actually interview and do, you know, a couple things. So Larry, what do you want to do on this and how do you want to proceed?
Ms. Morris will be providing a bit of an overview, Mayor. We actually have two items that the mayor and council will consider this evening. The first is the ordinance and the second is the methodology and the process for appointment of the judge, but I'll let Ms. Morris go through those.
And before she talks, so in other words, we can put some things into the ordinance, correct, tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I'll let you go.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Selena.
As Manager Raines said, we have two items related to the judicial selection tonight. The first is the establishment of the Judicial Selection Committee. The second is appointment to that committee and also approval of the appointment process. Staff recommends that the mayor and council approve an ordinance creating the judicial search committee under an emergency measure so that it is immediately effective. As the mayor said earlier, the city judge position is created by charter and runs co-terminus with the mayor. The charter requires that the council establish a committee via an ordinance. The committee would consist of five individuals or residents of the City of Casa Grande. They would be formed to recommend at least two individuals to the council for consideration of the judge position within 30 days of the end of the current term. Judge Juarez's term, as you said, expires on December 3rd, so the committee would have until January 3rd, 2019, to come forward with their recommendations. Once the position is filled, then the committee would dissolve automatically. And attached tonight is the draft ordinance. It has the minimum requirement set by the code and the council may expand those requirements as they desire. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so what I'd like to, what I'd like to, and I'll, and I'll, we'll talk a little bit about the committee members when we get to the committee piece, because that's a separate action, correct? So this is on the process, okay? So this, what we're talking about now is the process, and I know.
Of the committee, right, not the interview.
Correct, the process for the committee. And there's a couple things that I would recommend. One is I would recommend we put in language that they have the opportunity to interview. So I don't think that's necessarily in there, but we want to have, we want them to have the ability to interview the candidates.
Oh, the committee.
The committee.
The committee, oh.
The committee to interview the candidates. We're going to interview the ones that they put forward.
Right, okay.
But if they, if they want, you know, take the, is there a number that we have to pick that they can interview or?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the committee actually has the ability to interview. I mean, that's somewhat implied. If you're, if you're asking to make it a requirement, that you would do that this evening as part of your.
Personally, I think we should require them to speak to each of their finalists, even, at least their finalists, to have an interview, one-on-one interview with the finalists. Is it?
It's fine.
Okay.
But they're going to reach the finalists by interviewing.
Yeah, but in the past, they've just looked at the resumes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
If they get 20 resumes, they.
Oh, I see, okay.
You can pare it down.
So I guess, yeah.
Pare it down to their finalists.
But that goes to another question that's said, if you, do they interview any, everyone in the opportunity of fairness? Or if they meet the minimum qualification?
Right, there's a minimum requirements that they have to meet, and I think if you meet those minimum requirements, then they can determine if they want to interview all of them.
I have concerns about that, only because I think that it needs to be in the fairness. If they meet, if everybody meets a qualification, I mean, I.
Then if it's a qualified individual, then they have to interview them.
Yeah, but then, if they don't have to interview every qualified individual, couldn't it be who they think might be the best candidate?
Well, no, I mean, what, how do they determine that so that it is clear how they determined who they select of those qualified candidates?
And I think maybe it's like for agencies that hire individuals, you know, they go through a screening process in terms of the application, resume, and so forth, and you basically screen at that point in time so that you come back with your four or five individuals that you really want to spend some time interviewing and maybe the committee can kind of go through that process.
But they have a matrix of sorts that will, will come to the conclusion of how they.
Yeah, I mean, in the, when we, when we set up the committee, can we give them a list of checkmarks, basically? And they, they still have to make a decision whether they, you know, whether they think the person is worth interviewing or not. That's why we form the committee, right?
Right, as long as it's a clear understanding.
My concern is, is there's been times where we get hardly any, but then there's times where we get a plethora of that, and I'm thinking, this being an ad hoc committee of sorts, that if you get 23 applicants and you say they're all to be interviewed, that's a lot of time.
It is. As long as we're very clear on what, yeah, I mean.
So I would say, yeah, let them, let the committee decide. I'm comfortable with that because the committee is made up of.
Is there a limit on how many they can bring forward?
There isn't.
Fine, I thought there's a minimum.
I'd like, I'd like to suggest we get, that we get four, because that'll give us, that's two hours of interviewing if we give them 30 minutes. That's another thing you got to decide on.
Yeah, there's a minimum, but not a maximum.
And the fact. Mr. Mayor, if I can, just add some clarity for the mayor and council. We've got a couple of different topics that, that we're discussing at this point.
Go through each one.
Yeah, so regarding the requirement of interviews for the committee, if you stay silent, you ultimately leave it up to them. If you want to provide some level of guidance, then you should do so, try to come to agreement and try to do so in the ordinance that gives them clear information. And I think Councilman Varela has a good point, at least in some of the other processes that I've been involved in or seen, they ultimately, if you're going to leave the, if you're going to leave that up to the committee, you, they ultimately would, could find a process by which, that could be driven by the chairman, by which the, each can, each member would, would highlight, you know, five or six candidates. They would then ultimately agree on five or six that they would interview perhaps, and so if, that's just an example, obviously, but if, so if the mayor and council wants to ultimately drive those parameters, then you need to do so in the ordinance. If you want to allow the committee to establish the process that they collectively, that they would like to follow, then you could, you could ultimately allow that by states.
You know, I think if they have a tight group, that, kind of a cluster, and they decide they want to interview them to get more information on them, I think let them do that, yeah.
Yeah, I like, yeah, I think so.
So by doing that, we just leave it as it is? We don't have to set the parameters?
Yeah.
As long as they're abiding by the criteria that we've set.
Time with me?
Okay, yeah, no.
The next, the next item was the, the number of candidates that the mayor and council would expect to, to, for, to be recommended by the committee. The minimum number is two, and, and as I've pointed out prior, in the 17 years that I've been here, there's been a number of years where it's just been two. The council has specifically asked for two. There's, the, I've seen where the council has asked for as many as five, and in the last process, the recommendation was to, for three. And so ultimately, you would want to highlight, you would, you'd want to call out the number of candidate, call out and agree as part of your ordinance on the number of candidates that the council would like to, the committee to recommend.
Well, you could have a max and a minimum, a maximum of five and a minimum of two.
Yeah, and you could certainly do that. The way the ordinance is drafted right now, it simply says two or more, and two is the minimum that we have to do under our charter, and so the committee has, has that. If you want to set additional parameters, you know, you can. You could put a, you know, a maximum number. You can also put a minimum number, and sometimes that's, you know, council has done that as well. It's ultimately up to you on whether you want to do it, but you do need to do that if you want to put restrictions on the committee. You need to do it at its formation, which is in this, in this ordinance. Otherwise, you just talk to the chairman about desires that, you know, they may have, so.
Could we say a maximum of five and allow the committee to make? In other words, the committee could sit there and go, wow, you know, we've got, we have really good four, so let's do four, so maybe just say the committee's, yeah, so the committee's job is to recommend to us between two and four.
Two and five.
Or two and five, I'm sorry.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
Let them make that decision.
Two to five? So maximum five, because I'm two?
Yes.
So really, it's just adding maximum five?
I think Brett is crafting as we speak.
Keep in mind.
That's why we keep him.
When we get to the interview process, which is not, we're not discussing here, but it's part of this process, because it says how much time we're going to give each candidate. If every council member has one question and they get three minutes each, that's 21 minutes per candidate. And if we give them three minutes to give an opening statement, and then three minutes, but it's all part of this process.
Right.
Are we discussing that yet, or?
It's the next item.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So let's finish this item.
So we should finish this one first before we get to that one.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, the only other question I guess that I have at this point is whether or not the council would like to request a date specific, that ultimately you would be given this recommendation, that I believe the charter says that it's within 30 days of the.
So can we, can we have them give it to us and can we make, take action then on the 17th of December?
Well, I know that that's been a discussion that, that you and I personally have had, is the potential of having the interviews conducted and a decision being made on the 17th. And I, in my opinion, in order to do that, you would need to have the recommendation by December the 7th, which is a Friday, and then it gives us the opportunity as staff to put that in, in the RCA and whatnot, and so.
So December the 7th would be the date we need the recommendation by?
You can, and I would simply caution, as I, as I have Larry, that when it comes to forming a committee, you've got five people, they're going to have to have an agenda and follow all of the same, you know, rules and regulations that, that we do. If, if you want them to potentially interview, you want them to have that flexibility, you want them to have time, you're going to have Thanksgiving, you're going to end up with, you know, between the time they get it and the time they have to do it, about 20 some odd real days. And so, you know, I think a number of things you can do, as, as with any board and commission in this council, I think, you know, a couple of the members are, are here, you know, you can certainly, you know, communicate to the chairman, make a record of it in terms of kind of what, you know, you'd hope that they can accomplish. I have drafted in this ordinance what the last date is because that's what the, you know, the mandatory minimum is. You can certainly move that up, but if they are unable to meet, except for one time, they'll, you know, the day they get the applications, they're going to have to make their recommendation. So it's just a cautionary tale.
Also, I think you need language that there will be no prioritization of the recommendation.
Thank you.
They'd bring four or three or whatever forward, but they would be, they wouldn't be prioritized in any manner.
Thank you, I, I agree with that one wholeheartedly.
And to the data, I, I don't think that's enough, it may not be enough time to get five people's schedules together, plus all, plus collect the applications, plus the holiday, you know, this is probably the worst time of year, family-wise, that we can do.
So realistically, it's not happening.
So I would put the, but like you said, we can suggest what we.
Move it to the 28th and then we'd have to take action on the first, second council meeting then.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, to Brett's point, I, I believe that if we get, if, if the, if the council elects to proceed and leave it, leave it an open schedule, we ought to move forward with the ordinances drafted, which basically requires that it has to be, the recommendation has to be received before January the 2nd.
Right, so January 28th, or December 28th, we could get the recommendation, then we could act on the first council meeting in January.
It should be the 7th.
That'd be the 7th.
Is it, is it January 7th?
Yeah, January 7th would be our first meeting.
And if we get their recommendations on the 2nd, I don't have, I'm trying to pull up the calendar now, but I think you could actually do it all the way through the 2nd, and they're not likely to probably meet on the 2nd.
Right.
You know, we don't know, it's probably, you know.
Is that what you have in the ordinance right now, the 2nd?
But yes, it says January 2nd, which is, which is required by, which is required by.
Will that give us time to get it on the agenda by the 7th?
It gives us a day. It gives us really a.
Right, it has to be posted by Thursday, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the 2nd's the day everybody's recovering from New Year's, huh?
It's staff's call.
Speak for yourself, Dick.
From my perspective, Mr. Mayor, I think we just leave it as written. If, if, if we're going to allow for that period of time, we just leave it as written.
Okay.
And ultimately, we'll, we'll attempt to, we'll attempt to either schedule it for the first meeting in, in January. I know there's been some discussions in the past about potentially scheduling a special meeting separately for this, but ultimately, we'll, if you'll leave it as the 2nd, we'll establish the calendars as we get closer to that point.
Okay. Is there any special action we'd have to do with the current, with Deani, with our current judge?
Yeah, we'd make an inter.
So one of the, the items that are listed in the timeline is that on or before December 3rd, we'd want to appoint a interim judge.
Okay.
You know, traditionally, we, you know, we have done that with the, with the sitting judge, and, and I'm sure Ms. Raines will speak with Ms. Juarez to make sure that she's willing to do it, and I'm sure she probably would be, you know, to continue, you know, during that process in case we're unable to, to complete it by December 3rd. But that would be a separate action item that we would put on, on the December 3rd meeting.
Okay, all right. Is there anything else we need on this particular ordinance? So we'll just leave the dates the same then?
Yes.
Okay. And any other changes? Or thoughts?
Got to leave something up to the committee.
Yeah, there you go.
If you'll just give us a second, Mr. Wallace is trying to craft some language specifically for the maximum of five and the minimum of two.
Okay, yeah, let them decide.
I think you just nailed it.
Just, and I do apologize for asking for a little bit of time, just because I've heard a lot of different things as we've done the ordinance. So just to make clear, the ordinance as it's currently written, which is now going to go off because my Surface Pro does not like it when I touch it, but the ordinance as, as currently written does require two or more persons. There is no maximum. I have heard that we're looking at a maximum of five persons. If we were going to do that, we would simply amend the last sentence to read, the committee shall, the end of the last sentence to read, the committee shall recommend to the council at least two, but not more than five persons to fill the vacancy. I've also heard that we want to do it in, without an indication of preference. If you wanted to do that, I have language for that, that as well.
Yeah.
And I would probably add at the end of that sentence, such recommendations shall such recommendations shall list the names of the persons recommended in alphabetical order, comma, without further indication of preference.
That work?
Correct.
Very good.
Okay.
That's why he gets the big ones.
So, so again, you can either move it, we can either move it with that language, and then, you know, me being me, I'll read it back in to make sure that we all understand what we're voting on, or you can move it as is and then move to amend it, so it's-
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve with the new language as stated by the city attorney.
We have to read it first, though.
I thought you just did.
Have to read it.
I have to read the ordinance number.
I read the language, but I, we haven't read the title yet.
Can I get an ordinance number then, please?
Ordinance number three one zero five, in ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, creating a judicial selection committee describing its duties and declaring an emergency.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number three one zero five as presented.
Want to read in the changes?
After we get a second, I'll read in, just to make sure that I understood.
As to be read in, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
And then just for the record, so now the section one, the paragraph, what we'll do is in the second sentence, it now, it'll now read, within thirty days following the expiration of the term of the city judge, before January second, twenty nineteen, the committee shall recommend to the council at least two, but not more than five persons to fill the vacancy. Such recommendations shall list the names of the persons recommended in alphabetical order without further indication of preference.
Okay. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Okay, K two, this is a consider the appointment of the judicial selection committee and approval of the city judge appointment process. So the first part of this is the committee. And the committee members were selected with input from the council. In fact, all six council members, except for myself, actually put the names forward, so it was all six names were, were submitted by you all, and I didn't know who submitted what, although I did know yours, because you emailed me. But, so then I made the selection of the five committee members from that list and the chairperson. So they are as listed. Mike Henderson is the chair. Roger Vanderpool is a committee member, Jim Summers, Judy Jackson, and Gilbert Figueroa. Those are the five members. Does anybody have any comment on that, or?
No, I think that's a nice, broad representation.
I think so, too. Were they all contacted, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, so everybody's aware?
Everybody is aware that they're being considered.
Okay. All right, and then the next part to this is, it's the same piece, right, is the process? The interview process?
It's-
Or do you want them separate actions?
Right, they're, they're going to be separate actions. The, there's two potential action, action items. One is appointment of the judicial selection committee. The second action item was, if you wanted to take action on it, was to actually select the process by which you'll be interviewing the candidates once the committee has made its recommendation.
The council interviewing the candidates?
Correct.
Okay, so it's listed as one item here, so can we separate it?
Yeah, they're, they're separate, and they are listed as, as separate. We just didn't have the names of the judicial selection members at the time, so we weren't able to, to maybe make that as clear in the RCA, but they are two separate action items.
Okay, so let's consider the committee members first. So I'll take a, somebody proposing approval. Yeah, approving, approving the committees.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Moved in second, and all those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the committee's been appointed and selected under emergency action, so that becomes effective- immediately. Right, Larry, that, so that, that becomes effective immediately? And then the second part of this is the appointment, or the, not the appointment, the-
Process, yeah.
The method, the process.
So moved.
So when, and I think, I think we had it outlined that it was twenty minutes. So twenty minutes, we seem to be in agreement that it needs to be a little longer. So if we, if we all, and Larry will sometime this week outline how to get our questions in, so that he can-
We have a timer, so he can-
Yeah, we're going to have a timer, we'll have somebody indicating, you know, when they have a minute left, or thirty seconds, and then when their time is up. So each question they'll get, if you give them three minutes to answer each question, then that would be twenty-one minutes. And then if we give them three minutes at the start, to, to opening, and then three minutes at the end, that's twenty-seven minutes with three-minute cushion for a thirty-minute timeframe.
Good idea.
So then we'll, so we won't know how long the meeting will be until we know how many candidates?
Correct.
So do we approve this process today, or do we wait until we know?
Does it need to be approved?
Yeah, does it need to be? Because we might want to wait until we get the people, how many, you know, that are coming to us, right?
So ultimately, Mayor and council-
Thirty minutes each.
Right, ultimately, Mayor and council, historically, like, many, many years ago, the process was more of an ad hoc process that was sort of decided on at that night. And nobody was entirely sure what the voting process would be, nomination process would be, what, you know, interviews would be, which is why, you know, this council, a couple of times ago, had, had started to adopt this process. So ultimately, the process is, is up to council. If, if there are tweaks that you want made to the process, we brought it forward simply to try to make sure that everyone has a good understanding going in. But this piece of the process won't actually happen until you actually get the recommendation from the selection committee. So, you know, our recommendation is, if you think you might hear it as, as early as the seventeenth, that at least no later than the third would be to adopt this process. You can also change the process that night, if you so desire. It, it's really just there for council to understand and to provide the, the candidates with some idea of what they might expect when they walk into the council meeting that night to interview.
Okay.
But also for the public to understand.
Right.
And you may want to think about condensing the opening, or, or shortening it to a minute and a half. That's a lot of time, and a minute and a half for closing, as opposed to three and three. A lot of them have to do the interview anyway. Just, just a thought.
Well, they don't have to take all three minutes, either.
No, three minutes is a long time of talk. Also, maybe we should do a random, a random draw of the order, because it's always alphabetical, and the As always have to go first.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, certainly you can discuss the site of the night. If you have any guidance that you'd like to make to the methodology to get it modified, we can begin to work on that. You have the option of, of obviously considering it as well, and you have the option to ultimately table it, and, and we'll bring it back to council after we have a better idea of the number of candidates that we-
We'll table it for now, and then throw, you know, just throw the thought back out to everybody to be thinking about it, and think about what you, how you want to do it, and maybe even how many questions you want to put forward, you know, and you could prioritize your questions, and that way then we can get it to Larry, and if there's overlap, then they can pull your question number two, or whatever. But I think if we do, we state a one question each, and there are good broad cross-section of questions, then I think we'll get a good interview, and it won't be two-hour interview either, so. I think we need to try and keep it moving, because if we have four, that's two hours just, just in questions. And not that I don't mind being here for two hours, talking to people, but we want to move it along, too, so.
Move it along, but it's important.
Yeah, no, no, no doubt.
Thirty minutes isn't that long for an interview, so, but that's why if the committee decides to interview, that would be good, too, and so.
Right, right, so that we get two rounds of interviews done, so.
I'd rather have more than less.
Okay, we'll be thinking about that, and maybe next council meeting, we can put it on the agenda again.
Well, what, what we would likely do, Mr. Mayor, if the mayor, if there are any council members that have any comments to what we've introduced tonight, if you could send me those comments, then we can begin to start to work on incorporating those into a document that we can read back before council.
Okay. Everybody get that? Okay. There's no other action to take on this item, right?
You could, you could table it.
I move that we table this.
Okay. Okay, so we moved seconded to table it, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that, that action item will be tabled. Next are the public hearings. Amending the zoning ordinance one one seven eight. Mr. Tice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This agenda item is a request for a change of zone for a property located on the south side of Rodeo Road. It's on your screen. The property is addressed at one thousand seven Rodeo Road, and is, contains approximately eight point three four acres. Little bit of additional context for where this property is located and the surrounding land uses. You can see that-
Behind it, yeah.
Across the, across the road, the north side of Rodeo, is the Tierra Point Apartments, and also around the hard corner of Rodeo and Treacle are, is the little neighborhood shopping center. And immediately to the east of the site is the Rodeo Road Storage Facility. And then you can see that there's essentially vacant property on the, immediately to the west and to the south of this property. This slide gives you a little bit of idea of the current zoning and the proposed zoning. As I mentioned, the current zoning is Urban Ranch. And, you know, as you know, Urban Ranch is a low-density residential zone district with lot sizes of a minimum of one point two five acres. In this case, I'm pretty sure that that's not a logical nor reasonable zoning for the property, and it's not, we don't see that it would be developed as low-density residential, given the surrounding land uses and the proximity to Rodeo Road and Arterial Street. The proposed zoning, you can see in the bottom slide, which is to B two, and you can see how that would sort of expand the current B two zoning that is to the south and to the east, allowing a, a larger vacant area of B two zoning that could accommodate some type of future neighborhood commercial use, probably similar to maybe something that's to the north, or possibly an expansion of the storage facilities. In looking at zone changes, we focus on whether or not the proposed zone change is, conforms to a general plan. There's a couple areas that we look at with general plan compliance. One is whether it's in our phase one primary growth area. The site is in our phase one, which means has utilities essentially available, and it's easy for the city to provide service. We believe this zone change would support infill development. Development of this really would be infill, as it's surrounded by developed areas of the city. And we believe the zone change would be compatible with the surrounding land uses and would not have any land use conflicts. The, the land use, the general plan land use category that this property sits within is our neighborhoods category. And in our neighborhoods category, the primary land use is residential development. However, the neighborhoods category does allow for certain limited commercial development of a neighborhood scale. Specifically, the plan defines neighborhood scale as sites up to thirty acres. This site is eight point three four acres. The general plan goes on to say, within the neighborhoods area land use category, that the total commercial usage should be limited to no more than twelve percent of all land uses within a half-mile radius of, of this, any particular site. When we calculated this percentage, we found that the commercial land uses surrounding this site, although there are other commercial land uses, would be only eight point six percent. This slide gives you a better idea of what that looks like. All of the red areas with the hexagons are actually zoned commercial. Only a few are developed commercial, the neighborhood shopping center I mentioned on the north corner, and the mini warehouses. But there is vacant commercial on the east side of Treacle as well, both north and south of Rodeo Road. If all of these were to develop, we still would only have eight point six percent commercial within the half-mile radius, which is the square block that you see on the screen. Though there, we understand that there is no specific use proposed for this project today. The property owner is seeking a rezoning to be able to better market the, the property to potential users. Once there is a potential user, of course, there will be a major site plan proposed. They will go back before the planning commission with all the associated traffic reports and utility reports and drainage reports, so we can ensure that any proposed commercial development was really a complement to the city and fit well with all the surrounding land uses. I do understand that the property owner's representative is in the audience and would, could answer questions if you have specific questions of them. Again, we think that the addition of this, this property to the B two zone district will complement the, the other commercial zoning you see on the screen. That frankly, some of this property that's sort of south of the mini warehouse on, on Treacle, that's already zoned, it's kind of access challenged, because as you might know, there's a pretty large drainage channel of the parallels Treacle through that area. And actually, to cross that, it's going to have to be a fairly large and expensive box cover, or, or bridge, sort of what happened at the property at the northwest corner. So this gives an opportunity for some cross-access to happen, with some of the properties coming, accessing off Rodeo, some off, off Treacle, and some off Codota, with some kind of nice cross-access plan that we would hope to achieve as these properties develop. We, the city followed the standard notification process of ad in the paper, sending notices to surrounding property owners, posting a sign, and we received no comments at the, through our notification efforts, nor any public testimony, other than maybe one citizen might have spoke in favor of it. Planning commission did vote six oh to forward a recommendation of approval of this zone change from Urban Ranch to B two general business to council. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
What can you put on B two?
B two is a general business zone, so, excuse me. Most types of retail, other, no big box, but most types of, of retail of smaller scale, including service, retail, offices, medical office, general office, other, other uses that might be more intense in nature, like fast food, or even auto repair would be a conditional use. So your standard retail, office, and service uses.
Does this need to be opened up to the public, or?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Okay, we're going to have a public hearing, I'll be quiet.
Okay. All right. So this is a public hearing, so I will open the floor to comments from the public regarding this proposed zone change from Urban Ranch to B two. Anyone? Okay, well, seeing none, then I'll close the floor on this public hearing, and we'll throw it back to you all then for questions, comments. Mr. Powell?
I, I think it makes all the sense in the world when you look at the surrounding zoning and where it's located. I, I think it's a, it's a slam dunk as far as being where it is and being approved.
And I agree with Councilmember Powell. Doing these zoning projects in that hopefully will perk up the interest there and for maybe more development, and that, so. And usually, that's the first step before you can really market property, is to be able to get that, and to be able to do it without a lot of acrimony, I think, will help also, so I like the idea.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none with the comments, then can I get, let's see, this is a-
Ordinance.
Ordinance nine one seven eight point three nine four.
Ordinance number one one seven eight point three nine four. In ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance eleven seventy-eight and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to general business on property located at one zero zero seven East Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number one one seven eight point three nine four as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Gloria, going to get a- Gloria, gonna get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, moving to item L2. This is also a public hearing on a zone, zoning change.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, on this particular zone change, I'd like to ask James Gagliardi, the planner in my office who, uh, worked on this project, to make the presentation for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this item is known as the Hannah 15 Zone Change, named such because the subject property is close to 15 acres and it's located off of Hannah Road, just east of the Interstate 10 Interstate 8 interchange, south of Jimmy Kerr, west of Sunland Gin. The request is to rezone from Urban Ranch to the B4 Zone District, which is otherwise known as the Community Services Zone. Now, the current zoning of Urban Ranch, as with the last zoning case you just heard by Paul, is a zone district that primarily accommodates single-family residential on large lots, a minimum size of an acre and a quarter. The other types of uses you'd see would be raising of livestock and farming. The property owner, however, sees that this property is destined probably for more intense uses than Urban Ranch, given its location near Interstate 8 and 10, and being near the southern gateway into the city of Casa Grande. The request to change this to B4 is determined to be appropriate when we look at the city code. The B4 zoning is described as a zone district that provides for land-intensive retail, service, or manufacturing operations. And then also, the B4 Zone District should be carefully buffered from other uses and visibly buffered from arterial streets. This particular site is ideal because it's near arterial roads, Jimmy Kerr and Sunland Gin, however, being down the road on Hannah helps provide that buffering. Some permitted uses that you would expect to find in the B4 Zone include uses such as kennels, contractor's storage yard, light manufacturing. And then there's a number of conditional uses that would be subject to consideration at, at Planning Commission for a conditional use permit, which would entail, um, uses such as automobile repair and mini warehouses. Another way to describe the B4 Zone District, it's like a heavy commercial zone. It allows more intense uses than the B2, but not as intensive uses as you'd find in the I-1 Zone District, which is the light industrial. Now, right now, if you look at the zoning excerpt map on the right, you see that there is Urban Ranch zoning both to the east and west of this, um, property, with I-1 zoning to the north. However, the, even though you do have Urban Ranch zoning to the left and right, when you take a look at our general plan, um, this area is all classified as either manufacturing and industry, where this property sits, or to the west is commerce and business. Manufacturing and industry, the general plan land use designation that this property's located, um, accommodates B4 as an appropriate zone district. And staff finds that B4 is the most appropriate zone here, given that immediately to the west you have a commerce and business land use designation. B4 would allow uses that help with the transition from the types of zone districts and uses you'd see in the commerce and business, as you go further into the manufacturing and industry category to the east and to the north. Another aspect of the general plan that I want to talk about is one of the goals, which talks about protecting public views of the Casa Grande and Sacatoon Mountains, surrounding parkland, open flat agricultural landscapes, and public open spaces. Now, even though you do have this area in the manufacturing and industry land use designation, not too far away, you have the rural land use. I'll go back to this slide where you see to the northeast, north of Jimmy Kerr and east of Sunland Gin is the rural category. And on the aerial, you can see the, um, fields. So there's a real need to, um, preserve and help protect the views of the rural character. And so, as a result of that, there's a number of conditions of record being recommended, and the highlighted ones specifically pertain to the protection of use. So primarily, what the conditions of record are, is that any transformer, uh, backflow preventers, utility boxes, et cetera, shall be screened. If it's ground-mounted, it would be done by landscaping. If it's rooftop equipment, it shall be screened by parapet. Another condition of record is that, at the time of development, um, any parcel that abuts the rear zoning boundary shall have a final landscape plan that depicts a landscape area that's a minimum of 30 feet deep, with minimum of 15-gallon-sized trees of evergreen variety planted triangularly, no further than 20 feet apart. What that would look like is basically buffering adjacent to the interstate, so that as you're entering into Casa Grande, as this is the southern gateway, you do have a little bit of relief by providing this 30-foot landscape buffer. Another cri, another condition of record that I want to discuss is that, um, there shall be a screen wall of masonry construction, uh, along the property to the west or to the rear. Um, and also, the rear screen shall have a height of at least eight feet, and have a minimum setback of at least 30 feet from the rear property line. The graphic that I have up on the screen helps depict what that would look like. Along the boundary with I-8, you'd have an eight-foot minimum wall, just to, to provide some additional relief from motorists entering into the city. There's two other recommended conditions of record that, that just basically speak to the fact that when a use is ultimately chosen, and this does go to Planning Commission in the form of major site plan approval, um, this gives the ability for Planning Commission to impose additional screening methods, if the particular use warrants that. And then also, there's, uh, an additional requirement regarding a three-foot decorative, um, CMU parking screen wall along Hannah Road, essentially if there's, if, if, um, parking is in view of that street. As far as the public process goes, Planning Commission did consider this at the October 4th, um, public hearing, and, and they did recommend that City Council approve this with the conditions of record. Um, should City Council approve this, the next step would be for, um, a use to be proposed. I understand that the owner doesn't have a specific use in mind, they just find that the B4 Zone would be a more, be a more appropriate zone district. Um, so once a use is planned, then you would find a major site plan and/or a conditional use permit going to Planning Commission for their consideration. There are three criteria that is primarily involved with when considering, um, zone changes, and Planning Commission did consider these and found that these three criteria were met. And there was a public notification process that met our standard procedure. Um, through the notification process, I did receive one phone call from the property owner to the east, and one email from the property owner to the west, and both were okay with the, with the request, um, once they knew what uses were involved with the B4. Both were just curious what was, what was driving this zone change. Planning Commission did vote unanimously to forward to City Council a recommendation to approve this zone change request from Urban Ranch to B4, with the following conditions of record that are reflected in the staff report and the RCA. And this concludes my presentation.
I'm gonna open the public comment.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so, uh, I will open the floor for comments from the public regarding this proposed zone change. Is there anybody who would like to address the council? Seeing no one rush to the, the desk, then, uh, we'll close the floor and open it to council for questions. Mary? Lisa?
First time. First time, no, you've been doing good.
She's rolling up her sleeve.
I know, she needs to throw something at me when you do that.
No, I appreciate the, um, planning and zoning, putting these conditions, um, in here, but is it, is it reasonable? I mean, you know, as far as having the, you know, you just hate to make it so, you know, cumbersome for people to come in and build all this, so I just want to make sure, I mean, I, I like it, I like the, you know, the landscape and the wall and everything coming on the freeway, but is it something to, was the owner comfortable with that? And is it something that, you know, whoever comes in and, and builds, are they gonna find this reasonable?
Councilmember Fitzgibbons, I'm gonna try to answer that question for you. Uh, first off, let me say that probably all these conditions that we're recommending, we would, we would, um, characterize as best current planning practices. And with the current code rewrite that we're working on at a staff level that we'll be bringing forward to council, many of these development standards will be in, will propose to put in your new code, okay? Um, so I don't think they're unreasonable, I think they're really the types of development standards that will allow us to have industrial development in highly visible areas, which is, this is to the gateway of the city, that really complements the city while still offering lots of reasonable use. In this B4 Zone, you, there are some uses that can have a lot of outside, outside storage, and they may be a little bit unsightly, uh, so this buffering requirements that James is proposing here, I think really strikes a good balance between using the property and protecting the city's character. James has discussed these with the property owner, I'm gonna let him address whether or not, what the property owner's position was.
That's correct. Uh, I did disclose these conditions to the property owner, and of course, these same conditions had gone in front of Planning Commission, and he had not indicated any sort of opposition to these.
Thank you.
That's your question. Thanks, Lisa. Powell?
If you look at that piece of property, you can't be in a much worse place if you're doing Urban Ranch, or something. Right there with I-8 and I-10, right out your window. And so, I, I, this, I think you're taking an industrial area, and if you dress it up, put lipstick on the pig and, and make it look, because right next to it is a really nice, just right down the road, there is a really nice facility that's, that's very attractive, and, and so, uh, again, I think it's, yeah, yeah, I think it's, uh, I, I think the, I'm really impressed with the idea of, of buffering.
Yes.
And, and I'm glad that that was part of, uh, of what was put into this, because that'll look neat, if you really envision it.
And as a side note, too, is, is doing the aesthetics in that, because isn't that somewhat relative to if it ever comes to fruition, where deep, uh, Dreamport villages would, so then that would keep kind of that more aesthetically nice, and, and that would fit into the area?
Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, can I, uh, ordinance?
Ordinance number? Ordinance number 1178.395. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to community services on property located along, along the south side of Hannah Road, east of Interstate 10 Interstate 8 interchange, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 1178.395 as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, so we moved, the report's up, so I'm gonna start with, uh, my left, Mr. Powell, you may go first.
The only report I have to make is tomorrow's gonna be a really interesting day. Nighttime TV will be something.
But the day after will be amazing. No commercials.
Okay. This question?
Um, just want to, which, you know, I don't want to take the thunder from, we had the parade on Saturday, could not have asked for more beautiful weather, um, so three of, uh, four of us actually were on the truck, while we had others, uh, Donna, you'll, I hopefully will share what you were doing on Saturday, because that was amazing, particularly the five children. And, uh, Lisa, for Alzheimer's, uh, walking for Alzheimer. The Mosaic Festival on Sunday was fun, it, I think it's really gonna be one of those things, you have to start somewhere, you're gonna figure out what you did well, and what you did maybe not so well, but it was, the diversity is what really struck me. Often when we have events, there's kind of more of a common theme there, whatever, and this was just kind of out there. The entertainment was totally, uh, of variety, we had the Irish singers, we had an amazing band from the reservation, I was extremely impressed, uh, they did, and I even liked that music, the guitar music and that, doing the, uh, mosaics, the tiles and that, and I do have to say that, uh, Mayor McFarland's granddaughter put me to shame, because her tile's gonna look so much better than mine. But, um, no, that's about all I have to say.
No, we didn't burn any of our dogs.
Your granddaughter there, too.
Yeah, yeah, we did. Um, Donna?
Uh, as Mary said, I was not on the parade, but I was there in spirit. Uh, we had our annual adoption day for, uh, Superior Court. We had 45 children from our county adopted, many of them from the Casa Grande area, so it was a very long and gratifying day, so we enjoyed that. And, uh, ditto on what Mary said, uh, the Mosaic Festival was really good, I think there was a lot more people there than, than it really looked, because it was so spread out in, at the different museums and stuff. Um, uh, I think we served over 300 hot dogs, is what, you know, within a couple hour period of time, so that was good. Um, and, um, the next thing coming up, I will just say, the Neon Park, uh, project is tomorrow night, um, they're gonna be doing something at 5:30 to 7, so I hope people will come downtown and be part of that for a little bit. That's all I have.
Okay, Matt?
Well, Donna took my neon nights. But I, I wanna, on behalf of the committee, thank everyone on the council who really proved how government can cook a hot dog. We took five of us to serve it, opened the bun package, and we even subcontracted the actual cooking out to a family member of this McBride, so, the great exercise in government hot dog cooking.
We outsourced.
It was really, no, in all seriousness, it was a lot of fun, um, I won't hit on that too much. And then I talked to the, uh, the Ride for the Warriors Committee on the day after, and they said to tell Steve, um, how nice it was to work with your department, and how well everything went with the city, and I think they had, they were very happy with their event, so.
Pretty good.
Yep, they said it, they, it was one of their best evos, a lot smaller, but I think they probably made the same amount of money, and so, worked out really good. And then this Friday, we are planting flowers here at City Hall at 10:00 AM, for, uh, the kids are doing the garden out front. I'm standing in, I guess, for the Honorable Craig McFarland, I will be he. And, that's it.
All right, Ralph?
Also enjoyed the, uh, parade and the, um, the Ride for the Warriors event, and it's, it's good to know that all the, uh, funds that they raised goes to different, um, uh, veteran organizations in Pinellas County, so their, the organizations are, are very appreciative of that. And at, the other event on Friday was the, uh, Cesar Chavez, um, had the Dia de los Muertos, the Day of the Dead event, and thanked the, uh, Fire Department and Police Department for their presence there, and also the, um, Arts and, the Casa Grande Arts and Humanities Commission for their donation, as well as support from APS and Walmart, and there was close to 400, um, youngsters and families that went, so it was really great activity. And I think all these three days really reflect about, uh, the quality of life and the amenities and the community events, and, and also the Dave White Park and McNatt, I think this community... I think this community should be very proud of the quality of life and the amendments and amenities that we've seen over the last 10, 15 years, so a great progression.
And I want to piggyback on that, and I compliment Gloria and the Arts and Humanities Commission. You know, this year has been, the last few months have been, you guys have been working hard, and there's been, you know, a lot, just within the last couple weeks, that I know they sponsored the Mariachi Festival with the Latino Familia Initiative, and then with this Mosaic Festival, you know, incorporating the arts and music, the Bravo Awards, you know, honoring people in the art community. And Regis Summers, of course, has been part of this community and definitely deserved it. And then the Dia de los Muertos event was great, you know, there's, it's just nice, you know, we are such a community rich in culture, and so I really appreciate that commission and what they do for the community. So, yeah, no, I wasn't able to go to the Veterans Parade, but another important cause, the Alzheimer Walk is, yes, it's in Phoenix, but a lot of people from Casa Grande actually participate, it's a huge event, and for any of you who have anyone who's suffered from Alzheimer's or caregivers, it's a great event, they raise a lot of money, hoping to end that someday. The Homeless Committee, we have our quarterly meeting this Thursday, and so the subcommittees have been meeting, the six, seven subcommittees have been meeting for the last couple months, and so we're going to be coming together, and there's a lot of excitement, a lot of participation, and they've been working hard, so we're coming together on Thursday to kind of show what the progress is on that, that meeting, or those meetings. And then with the holidays right around the corner, it's hard to believe, they're right around the corner, but the, of course, Seeds of Hope does the Thanksgiving meal at the Elks Lodge from 10:30 to 1:00. So if anyone knows anyone, you know, they have plenty of volunteers, but, you know, but if anyone wants to, they can definitely go and help them out. And then Salvation Army, you know, they, I don't know if any of you have participated in the bell ringing, but they really are trying to get 100% of their bell ringers volunteers. Believe it or not, they pay people, they have to pay, and so they're really trying to get people, and I know our business did it last year, and it was great. I mean, you know, our employees loved it, you know, we did Sam's Club last year, we're going to, I don't know, I think we're doing Safeway this year, but I really encourage you, if you have a family that wants to do it, businesses, an organization, to definitely contact Salvation Army, because they're looking for people, and they want it 100% volunteer. And then lastly, you know, I know we were talking about, you know, shop local and, you know, but a lot of it is culture and activities, and I just want to remind people to go on our website, the city's website has all the different activities that are going on. You know, I just looked on it today, and you know, they have a book exchange at Dorothy Powell Crafts, at Dorothy Powell Senior, line dancing lessons at Len Cola, Spanish at Vista Grande, I mean, there's so many activities that are going on, so I really encourage the community to get on the website, look at the calendar of activities, because there's a lot going on in Casa Grande, and it's, I need to start going to more of those. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. And thank you to my fellow council members, too. I know it was a pretty busy weekend, we were all at a lot of different events, and I know I was at, I attended all of them as well and had a great time, it was good seeing everybody out on Florence for the parade, and then afterwards, Ralph and I were over at the Ride for the Warrior and had a really nice kickoff, it was honoring, it was particularly honoring women who served in the military this year, so it was kind of a nice theme, and they had 104-year-old, oldest female veteran in the United, or in the world, probably, I mean, she was in our parade, she was our grand marshal. So it was pretty exciting to see her there and actually getting around. And then there was a couple 94-year-olds that were there, too, so it was, it was pretty crazy.
The youngsters.
Yeah, the youngsters were the 94-year-olds, so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we had a good time, Mosaic Festival was fantastic, I thought, I mean, it's got to grow, it's, you know, it kind of, we saw a lot of people through the day.
We did.
Yeah.
And then towards the end, actually, when Mr. Powell's granddaughter was doing her thing there, it was actually, there were quite a few people there later, about 4 o'clock.
I miss your granddaughter, yeah.
So, yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty cool. Also, the History Museum had activities going on, and we had the Women's Center was, they had theater activities with the black box in there, and I was disappointed that the lowriders didn't show up, I don't know what happened with them. Did we ever find out why they didn't show, Gloria?
No communication.
Hmm, well, they're on my list, then.
I'll let them know, yeah.
But anyway, it was, it was a great event, we've got a lot of stuff coming up this week, I know Matt mentioned, and a couple other mentions on the Neon Park, so if you can show up for that, it's 5 o'clock.
5:30 tomorrow.
Oh, 5 o'clock, so I'll be on time.
Yes.
Tuesday.
I'll be there.
And then we also have a bi-local meeting here in the council chambers on Thursday at 5:30. So if you're interested in the bi-local program, you want to get a little more information on it, we heard a little bit of it tonight, but the local program will be kind of unveiled this Thursday. Southwest Gas has their groundbreaking this Thursday also out at the site on Thornton and Hila Ben Highway, so that'll be something to check out. The Garnet is going to have a grand reopening also this Thursday, that's at 4:30, so look for that if you're interested in ribbon cuttings.
When is the Southwest Gas?
What time? It's, Southwest Gas is at 8:30 out at their new site. And then there's also, I'm going to be attending this manufactured housing, it's changing your thinking about manufactured housing, it's a seminar up in, up in Phoenix, but I'm going to go to it and see if maybe there's some applications for affordable housing. It's one of my, because I'm the committee chair for that, so I'm going to go check that out. And then it's my granddaughter's birthday Saturday, and...
It's on your calendar.
And Mr. Powell's is on Thursday.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have.
I can? No.
That's all I've got. Anybody else have anything else?
No, not my birthday, my granddaughter's.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Okay, so moved and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Not me.
So we will come back out of executive session, and there will be some, yeah, if you want to hang around, we will come back out of executive session, correct? Well, no, I thought, don't we have to do your, you in public?
He left it here one time, and it was water. I snuck...